Okay, the February 10, 2015 City Council Meeting is hereby called order. Please stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Judd.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
De Estes.
Here.
Veenbos.
Here.
With seven present and none absent, we do have a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being video and audio taped for current and future broadcast over the city's new cable television channel. The first item of business are the minutes of the January 20 Committee of the Hall Meeting and the January 27 Council Meeting. The Chair asks unanimous consent to consider both sets of minutes in one vote. So moved, Mr. Mayor. Seeing no objections, is there... There is a motion. And do I have a second? And there's a second.
And a third.
Are there any additions, deletions to the minutes? And seeing none, those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. And for anybody who's watching, I am not Tom Rooney and I'm not the mayor. I am John De Estes, I'm the Alderman Ward 6, and I'm playing pro-Tom Mayor tonight. So, there are no mayor's reports. Are there any ward reports? I see none, but I have a couple. So, very quickly. Over the past few weeks, there has been quite a bit of discussion in the state of Illinois about medical marijuana dispensaries. And to make this very brief, for the foreseeable future, rolling metals is no longer under consideration for a medical marijuana dispensary. That was easy. Okay. The second thing I have.
Thanks, Lord.
A big thank you to Public Works for a great job in taking care of all our snow plowing over the last several weeks. Fred, if you could pass that along to all your guys, it was a great job. I do want to mention, though, that when we residents are shoveling and plowing our sidewalks and driveways, please do not shovel or plow or blow snow into the street. Not only is it against the ordinances, but it becomes a safety hazard. So, I had one resident say, her street was clear, and she came to a driveway and she almost spun around and there was a car coming in the other direction. So, please do not blow snow, plow snow, or whip snow into the streets after the trucks have come by. And lastly, I had a resident raise a question to me, and we talked about it at the January 27 Council Meeting regarding the Class C incentive for Clark Street, development of the former Dominick's property. And the resident wanted to know about this, and the answer is, the Class C discount, tax rebate, does not go into effect until the property is more than 50% occupied. Therefore, Clark Street is not currently benefiting from the Class C Cook County real estate tax discount at this time. So, for that resident who asked me, they're not getting that benefit. Okay, so, I would say that the meeting is open to the public, and since we have no one here but the invisible people...
You're not.
Way to go with the press, yes.
Freedom of the press. The press is here. Anyhow, I guess there's no signatories on the list, since there is no list, and we'll move on to the next order of which is pending business. Pending business, open for a second reading, is Ordinance A, to amend Ordinance 14-48. The Council passed an ordinance in November of 2014 amending the Code of Ordinances pertaining to trespass. There were several drafts of the ordinance, however, the ordinance presented to the Council in November 2014 was not the final draft. The attached ordinance is the ordinance in its final form. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner made a motion, it was seconded. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and nobody opposing, the ordinance is adopted. The second ordinance, number 15-05, is to amend code for second division vehicles. This is an ordinance which will amend the Code of Ordinances to provide for the parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. The ordinance was discussed at the Committee of the Hall Meeting on January 20. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Mr. Veenbos has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing no discussion, Madam, would you please take the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and nobody opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Consent ordinance. It looks like we have one consent ordinance this evening. The consent ordinance will amend ordinances 12-21, Logistics Coordinator, and 14-07, Assistant to the City Manager. Do I have a motion to move the ordinance forward for a second reading? Mr. Prina has made that motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, so... I'm sorry? Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Judd, I'm sorry.
This isn't something I'm in favor of. We originally set up, and I know for a fact that the Assistant to the City Manager, and we set it up with a specific purpose, a specific reason in mind as to why we did things, and now we're changing it. That's not something I'm interested in doing. These were originally set up in a similar manner, I'm sure, with the logistics coordinator. So, you know, the way they were set up and the design that they were set up is the way they should stay, not just change them, you know. And they were set up originally as ordinance. The salaries are put in there. I mean, we already raised the Assistant to the City Manager. I think we originally were somewhere between 35 and 37, and we raised it to, what, 43-ish, give or take, to 45. We had this conversation, I think, back in November when we were putting this out. And now, you know, we're going to change it again. So, it's, you know, we put these things in place for a reason when they're put in place. And, you know, whatever the reason is, you know, agree or disagree, but that's why we put them in place. And so, to change them just because, and, you know, I don't know about the equal pay for equal work, you're still getting paid a salary commensurate to the job, so, just because it's not a cost of living, you know, a 2% raise, and it's still a cost of living raise, and that was the whole purpose of the way it was designed. So, it's not something I'm going to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. Are there any other comments on this ordinance? So, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward to a second reading? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Judd.
No.
Baner.
Yes.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, the Clerk will please move this ordinance forward for a second reading. Okay. New business. Next item is the warrant. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills on the February 10, 2015 warrant? Mr. Veenbos has made that motion, has been seconded. Is there any comments on the warrant? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call a question?
Baner.
Yes.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
With seven in favor and nobody opposed, the warrant is approved. That moves us to consent resolutions. This evening, we have three. The first is to award a contract for three water pressure... I'm sorry, three water system pressure valves. The second is to accept all the Volume 1 and the city's portion of Volume 2 within the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay, say that one fast three times. And to approve the agreement with DK Mallon, a Draper Camer Company for Retail Consulting Services. Does anyone want any of these items pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon.
G.
G as in George. Okay, so the question is, shall the remaining resolutions be approved? Well, Clerk, please call a roll.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Okay, with seven in favor and zero opposed, those are passed. And since, Mr. Cannon, you pulled Item G, you get first crack at it.
Okay, thank you. This week, I had an extensive conversation with Ms. Diener and with Barry about this whole subject. They convinced me that this probably is a good contract in the sense that we want to keep Mr. Mallon on staff. My only objection to this at this point is just the volume of increase we're giving this. We're asking, we're being asked today to go from $1,200 a month to $2,000 a month, and I just think in light of where our economy is at and where we're at budget-wise, that's just too large of an increase in one year. So, I guess what I'm saying is I'm for this proposal, but at a lower rate. So, I would propose that we would do it at $1,500 a month, which is still a substantial raise, but far away from 2,000. So, I'm guessing I'm asking for an amendment to make this only 1,200, $1,500 a month.
Okay, so, I guess the question then is, is there a second to the amendment to reduce the $2,000 a month to the proposed $1,500 a month? And there is a second. So, let's take, let's vote on the amendment of reducing the increase from 1,200, I'm sorry, from 2,000, the proposed $2,000 a month, to the new $1,500 a month.
You need to ask for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Let's have discussion on that one. Is there any discussion on reducing the 2,000 to 1,500? Mr. Baner.
Thank you. This is kind of like our discussion for the AV upgrades. I would be inclined to agree, except I haven't had any, nobody telegraphed their intention to do this, so I don't know what that would mean in terms of the negotiations that have happened up to this point, and what it would mean in terms of negotiating it down to this, and what we would lose it in terms of what is provided. So, it sounds, I agree with the spirit of the amendment. It's just, I think, this late in the game, so to speak, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to support it. Thanks.
Mr. Baner. I'm in second. Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. I take a different tact on that in the sense that we did have zero conversations about this, and, you know, we've had no input anywhere along the line to make a decision whether we thought 1,500 or 2,000 was reasonable. If we're paying a guy, you know, $1,200 and give him a 67% raise, you know, if you've done something and there's something we can sink our teeth into and say, okay, X, Y, or Z was brought in, it increased our tax base by X, Y, or Z, or something along that line, or took up a significant chunk of retail space or office space, then yeah, then I think that there's some validity to, you know, getting more money. But, the last, I know last time, you know, he addressed us, there was not a whole lot of work, or not, excuse me, not a whole lot of things that have actually materialized. And I know that, you know, for a number of years now, that it takes two or three years to get some of these deals done. That's fine, so let's get the deals done and then address the situation, but getting a 67% raise from the residents, and, you know, unless, you know, we miss something somewhere, or I miss something somewhere, I don't know of any significant changes to our demographic, business-wise, that's been produced. And so, you know, without something like that, you know, and if it was in the packet, you know, I'm not sure how we're supposed to just say, okay, the 67% raises. So, you know, we talk about the budget, we talk about not raising taxes, we talk about not spending money, and then we turn around and, you know, do something like this. So, this isn't something I'm going to support. I mean, I would support it at 1,500. I still don't like the concept of jacking it up. You know, we haven't seen a whole lot of things materialize, but, you know, I can understand that there's probably some expenses that he has to take care of and whatnot, but just an arbitrary number, you know, 2,000, it's not something I'm going to support. So, if the motion passes, I'll, you know, be supporting it. If not, I won't. Thank you.
The only comment that I would say on the staff-wise is, actually, this is a negotiated number. Obviously, we've had some discussions with DK Mallon, Mike Mallon, with some of this discussion, and obviously, the Economic Development Committee sees the progress reports. When he was here in November, you saw the October progress report. But again, with all the facilitating that Mike Mallon does, and I have Ashley Dramer and Kramer with the DK Mallon, with obviously some additional services from his staff, too, again, we feel comfortable, and that's why it was brought back. And yes, there was some negotiations that were done with Mr. Mallon to get to this price at this point.
Any more comments? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the question I would ask to the City Manager, Orta Valerie, then, is I guess it would be really helpful to me to find out specifically what things he's bringing to us this year that he didn't bring last year. Because if we're going to ask for anything more than a 25% raise, which is a pretty substantial one in itself, I think someone, I think we have an expectation as a city, or we better, what better value are we getting this year than we got last year? And I don't see any of those things answered in the presentation we've had so far. That may be true that he's actually bringing value, but I guess I would like to hear specifically things he's doing this year that he didn't do last year, and we're still giving him a 25% raise.
And I would actually go back and saying, with the value added and with the additional work that he actually does, and again, bringing in additional brokers who have multiple listings and look at some of the properties and try to deal with the owners of properties, and some additional work that obviously you might not see, but we deal with Mr. Mallon, it is value-added and it is additional, and that's why when we went back with discussing the pricing and how we've seen how it's gone up over the years, we felt comfortable at where we stood with this $2,000 number to bring it back.
As I sit on the Economic Development Committee, I see Mr. Mallon, I get his, we get his reports, and they're quite extensive. Now, he is a broker, basically. He's a dealmaker. He's a person who brings interested parties to the city and introduces them to property owners. And then, they need to make a deal. He's not technically the dealmaker. He's the one, he's the one who facilitates and introduces. If, if those deals don't happen right away, they're, obviously, they're not meant to happen. I would support going to the $2,000 a month for another year, and then I think we need to probably take another hard look at it. The economy is turning and has turned around, and if, if we want to set specific goals, then we need to set those goals. If we say we want him to make a deal happen in the next 12 months, and that's his goal, then we need to let him know that that is the goal. By the same token, if he doesn't, then what do we do? And then, who do we find to replace him? And are we prepared to do that? So, at the present time, that's my feeling on it. I mean, if staff went through this, and staff said they've negotiated with him, and they have gotten us to get to this price, and there's more value adds, then I would support this for one more year. But, we'd have to, I guess, rather than cutting, reducing an amount that's been negotiated with in good faith, I think we should be talking about this six months from now before it comes up again. And anybody who wants to come to an Economic Development Committee meeting should join us. We meet once a month, typically the first Tuesday of the month. And if we can't have more than three City Council members there, I'll gladly give up my seat for one meeting if somebody else wants to go, and listen to what Mike has to say and what he does. So, with that being said, is there any more comments on the amendment to change the $2,000 a month proposed to $1,500 a month?
I have, you know, always supported staff when they are working on these, and so I'm taking the balance of supporting staff, but I also understand there's a frustration here that, are we getting the best bang for the dollar? And also, I have to take, in fact, Alderman De Estes has been, I don't know how many years on economic development? Two, three?
A few?
A few, okay. So, I take that and weighing that in part. What I would like to see is, I will support this tonight, but I think we need to have... I'm not sure whether, how to put it, but I would like to see him come back to the Council a little more often than he does.
Okay.
And say, you know what, this is, because as, the frustration that I hear from the residents is, he may be bringing value to us, but what lease has he signed for us? So, that's what I hear. I'm, will support this tonight. I'm sure that staff understands where we're coming from, but I walk through this community and, like many of you, and they keep asking me the same questions, and I, this coming year, I would like to see at least a lease or something come forward. Otherwise, I don't know whether I would support renewing the contract next year. So, I'm just giving it out there. Thank you.
Any further comments from any Alderman on the proposed reduction from 2,000 to 1,500 a month? Mr. Veenbos.
Yeah, this is a sensitive subject for me and my ward. There's two subjects that we talk about a lot that people come to me about. Number one is, when are we going to fill up more of the vacant properties? Number one. Number two, of course, is roads. But, I feel as Alderman Len has just said, I'm very sensitive about this, and I don't see a Plan B if we don't do this for the $2,000. But I'd like to see a Plan B, I'll support it this time, but I'd like to see some, I'm just going to call it results, that come from this, for this kind of, kind of money. And I also agree, I'd like to have more exposure, maybe he can come to our Council Meetings more often so that we can see what's exactly going on. I also have some other ideas myself, as I've been, I'm new to this, of course, but I have some other ideas, too, that maybe we need to do some other things to market our city more. And maybe that can come up, and we have those discussions. So, I'll support it now, but I have a lot of questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on 2,000 to 1,500 amendment? Okay, since there are no further comments, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll on changing the, the, the ordinance? Resolution? Resolution from 2,000 a month to 1,500 a month?
Veenbos.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
No.
Majikis.
No.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
No.
De Estes.
No. With two yeas and five nays, the amendment does not pass. And now, we're back to the original, and I think, Mr. Kremstock, I think you've heard, and Valerie, you've heard the Council's direction pretty clearly. The Council would like to see and hear from Mr. Mallon more often, so please go back to the schedule, and let's see if we've got him coming quarterly, then maybe we want him once every other month. And if he's coming every other month, then let's have him come once a month. But the Council would like to see him more often. And I think we need to clearly make sure that he understands that we have a goal in mind this year, and I think it was, I'm not going to say it was unanimous, but it sounded pretty strong to me that we need to get a lease signed this year, and/or if we, if we want to renew his contract once again. And then, we as a Council need to have Plan B, and I think Plan B is going to rely on staff as well, so that if six months into the year, we don't have something concrete going on, then staff needs to start going out and finding us a Plan B, whether it's a new consultant or some other suggestion. But I hope that that encapsulates what I heard tonight. Is there any further discussion, or please help me add more if I've missed something, on the, the resolution, Resolution 15R-09? Is there any further discussion on that? If not, Madam Clerk, please take a roll.
Did we get a motion to do the amendment?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think we did. We had to start it.
Did we?
Okay, let's...
We got a motion to do the amendment.
Okay, let's, let's, let's make sure that we've got, let's take a motion to approve the original resolution. Do I have a motion? Mr. Baner, and it has been seconded. Now, let's get to the vote. Madam Clerk, please take a vote.
Cannon.
We're voting on the original thing.
On the original resolution.
No.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
No.
Baner.
Yes.
De Estes.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Okay, with two opposed and five in favor, the resolution passes. I guess we're at that point where we go to other businesses and reports. And since the mayor is not here, he can't have any appointments, and since the mayor's not here, he can't have any proclamations. And since we want to end this quickly, we're going to get done before he gets here. So, is there a City Clerk's report?
No.
Thank you, City, Ms. Madam City Clerk. City Staff Reports, how about Community Items of Interest?
We actually have 10 of them that are listed in the packet.
10?
Yep, 10. It's a long list. Obviously, this Thursday, that would be February... Obviously, this Thursday, that would be February 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at St. Clair Church, 3900 Meadow Drive, they will be hosting a visit of the Greater Chicago Food Depository Protos Mobile. Try saying that a few times quick. There's fresh fruit, vegetables, and bread, and they will be distributed at the East Parking Lot. It's a first-come, first-served basis. There is no ID required, and this is a free event. Again, it's the food, Greater Food, Greater Chicago Food Depository Protos Mobile. Obviously, this Friday, Friday, February 13th is the last day for the holiday light recycling program that the city swank and Elgin Recycling on conduct, which will typically mean Monday or Tuesday, the box will be out of here, or both boxes. Obviously, as mentioned earlier, with all the snow that we have, we do recommend and hope that every resident will adopt a fire hydrant, and if you have a fire hydrant, please make sure that it's access, that it is available during the winter during this extraordinary snow. We're not as bad as Boston, but we still have our 19 inches floating around here. And again, it really does help the fire department to make sure that it is shoveled out. The next part is what we mentioned last meeting, and this is the last week, but the Rolling Meadows Fire Department is currently accepting applications for the position of fire paramedic. Please see the fire department webpage for information, or call 847-397-3352. And then, obviously, what we also want to mention is, coming up on Monday, February 16th, is the Chamber of Commerce 10th Annual Tecnicera Business Luncheon, and this program does start at noon, and it is at the Meridian Banquet at 1701 Algonquin Road. And we do recommend if anybody would like to go to that, please contact the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce at 847-398-3730, or visit the Rolling Meadows Chamber website. We'll have another update coming up on this one before, but we do want to invite everybody to community birthday party that kicks off the city's 60th anniversary celebration, and it will be conducted on Thursday, February 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30. And actually, there will be a band that's actually starting at 6 o'clock, so if you're a little early, and this will be at the Community Center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. We do have a blood drive that is scheduled for Friday, February 27th, noon to 6:00 p.m. at the News Grant Fire Station, this 2455 Plum Grove Road. Walk-ins are welcome, but if you register, that would be greatly appreciated by Life Source who does it, and you can contact the fire department to actually schedule something. And then, we do have the Rotary and the 60th Anniversary Ad Hoc Committee will be jointly working on the St. Patrick's Day Dinner, and is scheduled for Saturday, March 14th, and this is the 15th Annual St. Patrick's Dinner in auction. And it is, again, the Rotary Club of Rolling Meadows and the 60th Anniversary that will be putting it together. At 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., again, at the Rolling Meadows Community Center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. If you would like tickets, the local Rotarian over there is holding on to his green tickets. He would be more than happy to sell them. Or you could also contact Park District Director Amy Charlesworth at 847-818-3220, or you can also call Public Works Director Fred Vogt, if you do want to see him right after this meeting.
That's me, Vogt.
And then, obviously, what we also remind people, have you seen the February Electronic News and Views, which we call the E-News and Views? If you have not, please visit the city website at WWCityRM.org, click on News and Views tab. This is the sister publication that we print, obviously, every other month, and again, this is another great way to get some additional information from the city. The Electronic News and Views is actually published on the off months, so that would be obviously this month, and April, August, April, June, August, October, and December. And then, the final one that we have, and it's just an item that we've actually touched base in the past, and we'll have this every so often, reminding senior citizens in Rolling Meadows that's 65 years or older, we, the fire department is offering home safety surveys, and the senior safety program is for residents aged 65 and older, and again, it's Rolling Meadows residents, this is part of a grant that we received. And trained fire department personnel will perform a safety survey, provide guidance to minimize the risk of fire and injury, and install free smoke and carbon monoxide detectors to residents who request the home visit. This program, again, is funded by that FEMA Fire Prevention and Safety Grant that we did receive, and if you're a senior and you would like to participate, please contact the fire department at 847-397-3352. With that, that concludes topics of interest for this meeting.
Thank you, Barry. Now, we move to PO disclosures over $2,500. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three POs on review, and nothing further to add.
The next item is background on the fire station, and I guess Chief Franzgroth, you're on, you're up?
Yeah, it's, just gave you some background information in preparation for next Tuesday's discussion at the committee, the whole meeting, so nothing to add to the report.
Okay, great. A lot of stuff there, a lot of good, a lot of good information. Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Krempstock, we'll go back to you for the agenda for the next committee, the whole meeting on February 17th.
We do have eight items that are scheduled to be talked about. 2058 Gulf Road project, that will be back, obviously, the council will see some of the plans, and also, we'll be talking about the agreements and some other things. Lexington Homes will be here to do a presentation regarding their property across the street, and that is a nice little update, just so all the residents know what's going on, too. And we're going to have a billboard discussion in the Euclid Office Complex, then we'll be back to the fire station discussion. 2014 Economic Development Recap, 2016 Budget Parameters, EAC Update, this will be the first update, and I came back from EAC as we're trickling additionals, and there will be other meetings that we have more. And then, obviously, 2015 Street Program Recommendation to Proceed, where we have the money at this point in time. So, with that, that is the eight items that we are actually working on at this point in time.
Okay. So, we should probably bring our pillows. It's going to be a long one. Okay, now, we move to matters not on the agenda, and I am going to ask Ms. Lori Czak. This is, I'm surprising her with this one, but Ms. Lori and Mr. Pran and I are members of the 60th Anniversary Ad Hoc Committee for the city, and I want to, first of all, thank Lori and Len and all the members of that committee so far. Len and I are kind of co-chairs on this thing, so, but a lot of work has gone in, a lot of great ideas have come out, and we are kicking it off on Thursday, February 26th, as Mr. Krempstock said, with our, with our birthday party. So, we would like to invite every resident to come out and join us for refreshments, because I'm not sure if it's cake and coffee or what, but it's refreshments, and it's the start. I know many of my comrades at arms are going to be there to help us celebrate, and it's the start. And then, like, like it was said, the next event is going to be in conjunction with the, the St. Patrick's Day Dinner, and we're looking forward to that, too, and that's going to be something really cool. And, and other things, Lori, I'm going to defer to you on this one, I know I didn't tell you about this, but tell us some of the cool things that the committee has got going so far.
Thank you, Alderman. We have a ice cream social that will be held in conjunction with the Park District on May 30th. I don't have my events list in front of me.
That's okay.
But I believe it's Saturday, May 30th. We are also working on adding a new event, that was the Brainchild of Alderman Prina, and it will be sort of a mini Ravinia. We're calling it Wine Down by the Creek, where we will have wine and beer and some sort of entertainment, and it will be more of an adult, adult event. We will be geared, that'll be in June. We haven't chosen a date yet, but we're working on it. And then, we're going to be gearing up for our parking lot party slash family tailgating, which will be held on July 18th, which is a Saturday, from 3:00 to 11:00. It will be a very family-friendly event with food trucks, and you can bring your own food as well, many kid activities, and then some sort of a band, a good headlining band later on that evening.
Don't tell everything, just, that's enough.
Okay.
We just want to give everybody a little bit of a tease there. And we've got some magnets, I believe, that are, they're about done, and we've got some cups, mugs, that are, that are done.
They're for sale.
They're for sale, yes.
Okay. They're for sale, and we also have some yard art, I guess we could call it?
So, we have.
Yard flags?
Right, we have garden flags.
Garden flags.
So, for sale would be garden flags, coffee mugs, and coasters, and then we will be having some giveaways going on this year, too, and we'll let those be a surprise.
And we also did some street banners, I believe, and our goal was to sell about 40 or 50, and I think we have sold.
71.
73.
73 now. Yeah, we just sold.
So, we've got 73, and the committee has come up with a really sharp-looking logo for, to be used, that we're going to be using for the entire year, so I guess I extend my thanks to Lori for leading the charge, and for, for Mr. Prina for coming up with that great summertime idea, and the rest of the committee, and I'll never remember all their names, so I thank all of you for helping us out so far. We've got a lot of things planned every month, so we hope all the residents of the city will take advantage and join us at one or more or all of the events. So, that's all I have on matters not on the agenda. Does anyone else have any matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, and I don't sound effects, can I?
Stop laughing.
Can I have a, a motion?
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Okay, so, we're not, we're not going to adjourn, we're just thinking, I'll just continue talking. So, what else can we talk about now?
I need to get to the library.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And there's a second. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are adjourned, maybe.